Good afternoon. Welcome to the May 28, 2019 Special Call Working Session of the Board of Commissioners. We'll cover two working session items today and the rest of the tabs we covered to tonight at the seven o'clock meeting. Just to remind everybody, there'll be no motions, no votes, and all the concerned information as presented today. So I believe, Bill, you have both the items today?
Yes, sir.
So you have the floor.
All right. Greetings, course chairman, Board of Commissioners, County Manager and Staff. This is to present information, allow advanced disposal to come up to present information regarding a first request increase of fee. Advanced disposal, they work with us solid waste transfer station since September 2009, and they're making their first request increase to fee charge to Cobb County residents utilizing our transfer station off of County Services Parkway. Advanced disposal services incorporated for this first request during the 2019 Solid Waste Management Authority Meeting we had with the Solid Waste Board, which happens to be to our Board of Commissioners. And more information discussion will be brought back to this work session. So at this time, I want to introduce Mr. Steve Edwards, who's going to come up and make his case and explain his interest in a fee request which would require a contract change.
Commissioners Chairman, thanks for having us. Staff? This is Adam Cochran. He's gonna talk about some of the points that I want to make today. As Mr. Tanks alluded to, we talked at the Solid Waste Authority Meeting about coming before the board and asking for an increase. There's many, many reasons why, and I outlined that in a letter to Mr. Tanks. First and foremost, transportation costs have been, went up since 2010. Secondly, there's been more federal and state guidelines and new laws regarding landfills. And those are the two primary reasons. And Adam's gonna talk about the volume and what you're seeing at the transfer station.
Good afternoon. So, in the last four years since I've been here, the lines have steadily gotten worse. I would contribute that a lot to more residents moving to your county. It's a wonderful place to be. So it's, it's been increasingly getting worse. The cost is also not going up, which everywhere else is going up. So it's a better deal to be coming to the transfer station for everyone. We were able to go up on the out-of-county residents, which helped a lot. That started, we were doing about 100 a day, and that's gone down to about 25 to 30. So it's kind of leveled out there. We're doing about 600 to 700 cash customers a day that are Cobb County residents. And that's gone up probably 25% in the last five years. So it's, it's a lot of people to put in one facility. The bucket can only hold so much a day. So it's, it's increasingly difficult for us to, to keep up.
Also too, we did a comparison in a study of transfer stations in Cobb County and in the ARC, and your transfer station is significantly lower than every one of them. So I'll mention that as well. What we're proposing here is, right now, it's $7 per ton up to 400 pounds. We're proposing it to go to $10 per ton up to $400, up to 400 pounds. So it's a, not a huge increase. We think it's fair and equitable, and that is our ask. We don't have a huge elaborate PowerPoint presentation, but we can come back with facts. And we wanted just to introduce this idea to the board and see what your thoughts are.
Well, for one thing, $7 to $10 is a 42% increase, so just want to know here that it seems small a number.
That is, one way of looking at it, yes, sir.
But the headline will read, "A 42% increase in your fees," so.
Yes, sir. It's one way to look at it, yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
And we do want to work with the board. We've been your partner for a long, long time, and we understand those things. We understand your concerns.
Okay. I'll go to our resident expert here on the board, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Gamble. This is her area, but Commissioner Burrow here has a lot of expertise.
Yes, she does.
In her background, and like to see what her thoughts are.
What was the increase for the out-of-county now that we're checking?
So the out-of-county rate is a flat $50 a ton for out-of-county residents. So there's no minimum of 400 pounds. It's just $50 to start.
And whether they have a ton or not, that's the minimum?
Yep.
Okay. And I think, well, I don't know now, because I've been out of the industry for a long time, but most of the private or even public transfer stations charge a flat rate for pickup trucks or trailer loads from residential customers, not commercial, of like $15 or $20.
So our minimum at, I've got 10 transfer stations around Atlanta, and the lowest rate I have now is $65 a ton, and that's a one-ton minimum for cash customers.
Okay. So I, I know it sounds like a lot, 42%, but you can't, they can't go anywhere else for $10 a load for 400 pounds. I mean, I think that's reasonable considering the market and comparable rates, not comparable rates otherwise. And then, but you're, you're just talking about the residential customers that come in with a pickup truck or flatbed trailer loads, not, you control the gate rate for the
Correct.
Commercial haulers.
Correct.
And to your point, we looked at the $15, $16 range, but we thought, let's not do that, but let's, let's keep it as minimum as we can and stabilize those costs. And that's why we gravitated toward that $10 instead of the 15 or 16.
So, so the $10 would apply to the 600 daily customers?
Yes.
Yeah, I got, I got a question about this. I mean, so you say, well, right now, it's $7 up to 400 pounds, but it's $7 a ton, right?
No, it's, so it's $7 for the first 400 pounds, and then it's 3 cents a pound for every pound overlap.
Okay. And then, is there a per-ton rate, or is it just 3 cents a pound?
It's just 3 cents a pound.
Okay. All right. And we had talked, when, when you first came in, talked to me about this, about one of the issues that we had, and I know that Waste Management is the one that has been coming around and picking up the recycling everywhere else at the county, but as part of the contract, you all were coming to the, the four locations, I think we had, for recycling in each one of the, in the commission districts. And we ran into a problem that the once a week was not enough. And what I had said to you was that what I would want to see as part of a rate increase is an agreement in that contract, then it's set at once a week, it's either twice or three times a week, because folks are using it, but we just can't have that stuff piling up like we were with only once a week. So, I mean, if we look at this increase...
And that's something we would consider, definitely. And I think working with Kimberly, I mean, we'd like to educate folks what goes at those things.
Right. Yeah, I know we had that problem too, but I mean, you know, I think as a minimum, it would have to be two, it could potentially even have to be three times a week. I think that there needs to be a little bit of flexibility that maybe in the contract we put, increase it to twice a week with the ability, as needed, to three times a week, maybe not on, you know, every, every time, but there just needs to be a little bit more flexibility than we had before.
I, I think we'd definitely be willing to, to look at that, consider that. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Would that incur a higher increase for the residential?
I don't think so, no.
I would think so.
It'd just be something on our shoulders that we do for the Cobb community.
Okay. The, the other suggestion, if they didn't provide it, would be to make it part of the contract with Waste Management, which would now be advanced too. So of all the county parks and county facilities and the school, they have, we're part of the school contract too.
Yeah, I only, I just...
That could be incorporated in that contract as well.
Yeah, I, I just brought it up, and this was because it was already in the contract that set the rates at the transfer station. That's why I thought that it was, just to continue that.
Yeah. I think that'd be a good idea for now, while they still have it.
Any thoughts? So, Bill, what's, they come back a second time? Is that...
You finished?
Yes, sir.
It has to be in a gentleman.
This work session was to allow exactly what happened, questions, exchange of information. The process now would be a change to the contract, which is what's in place, which freezes them at $7. That's why they couldn't just arbitrarily change it. And then that contract would, at that point, come back to the board for an official vote and discussion, the, the regular package. This was just a chance for them to come talk in a non-voting environment about what they intend to do, why they want to do it, and allow you all to ask questions. So at this point, they don't have any official go-ahead, but at this point, we're gonna go and start some agenda work.
Yeah, well, make sure you work, Commissioner Gamble.
Yes, sir. I will make sure I work.
Do you remember who she is, right?
Yes, sir.
Is she new?
I do.
I just want to make sure.
I failed at my job.
And, and Willie, while you're up there, before we move on to recycling, and we've talked about this, but this is mainly for the public, because all of us have received the numerous emails about American. Let's talk a little bit about what the situation is, what the county can and cannot do, and what we see moving forward, because we cannot have trash piling up this summer like it is right now.
Yes, sir.
It's a health risk.
Matter of fact, we're set, once they finish, Kimberly's gonna actually come up and talk about recycling, then when I close, I'm gonna, specifically to what you're talking about, that is probably the most popular discussion point.
Right. Yeah, we definitely need to inform the board as what, what the county can and cannot do, because there's a lot of things we can't do.
Yes, sir.
But we also need to kind of let the folks know that, that we're aware and that we're trying to do as much as we can.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
Yes, sir.
Gents, thank you.
Okay, continuing on, at this point, I'd like to bring up Ms. Kimberly White. During our 2019 Solid Waste Management Authority Meeting, come on up, Kimberly, the Board of Commissioners requested more information about the current state of our recycling in Cobb in direct that the information along with alternatives to improve our Cobb's recycling be brought to them during this work session. Kimberly's gonna now talk, she'll explain her presentation, but this is more specifically to recycling. And we would come to you, Commissioner Gamble, for some of those great ideas you have.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Okay, so I'm gonna talk to you this morning about our comprehensive recycling program for Cobb County, Georgia, kind of our vision, you know, where we want to go with, with recycling in this county. So this is our current state of recycling. As you can see, the two green checkmarks are the areas that we are addressing. So we do have curbside recycling. A lot of our residents are offered that, however, not all of them are offered recycling, and I'm gonna go into that in a little, in a little bit. And we do have recycling events, and as you, if you remember from our Solid Waste Management Authority Meeting, I spoke about how we increased our recycling at these events by over like 400% and received multiple awards, national and state, and we're doing a really great job with that. However, we have some areas that I would say need improvements, our recycling education, our glass recycling, ordinance changes, staffing levels, and then our material recovery facility, like a MRF, the material going to the facility that's across the street from us on County Services Parkway. And there's some areas where we do need some additional assistance here, is drop spot recycling, government facility recycling, public space recycling, and equipment. Currently, our recycling program, our organizational structure is set up like this. So I manage the program in, in the executive director for the board, I'm my own admin, and also the recycling coordinator. I do all of this with one and a half staff members, a part-time program leader, and then a full-time program specialist. So these are pictures of a community that's very similar to ours, just, you know, communities all throughout the United States that have issues with recycling and litter prevention, really because of recycling issues. When you have areas that look like this, it's really because municipalities, you know, kind of neglect to address recycling in a row, in a more comprehensive approach. And before we say, okay, well, what does this have to do with us, because this is other communities? This is Cobb County. So we have districts one, two, three, and four, where we have litter that's accumulated on the sides of the roads, and we have done extensive research through People America Beautiful, the difference are the, the link between recycling programs and having a comprehensive recycling program in your county and litter occurrences throughout the county. These are some issues of our recycling drop spots. So we have all of the districts here, we have, we had recycling drop spots in all of the district locations, and as Commissioner Ott mentioned earlier, we've had some challenges with these, with these drop spots. So we've had, you know, we need additional pickup at these locations, and you can look at this on the other end of the spectrum, that people are really, you know, you have a lot of residents, we have a lot of residents here that want to participate in recycling, they care about the environment, and they are actively engaged, but we have to give them an opportunity to, you know, recycle in a proper way. So how do we get from the area that we were? So we want less of that, right? And we want more of this. We want more recycling in the parks. We want more overall recycling, public space recycling, convenient drop-off centers, and curbside recycling that's, that's effective and efficient. So how do we get to this? Through a government-community waste disposal protocol. So I'm gonna explain this, as you can see on the left, what we're looking at is the arrow going down, is the amount of the return on investment. So how much are we putting into this program and what we're getting out of what we're putting in? And then control is on the right side. So if we start from the bottom, if you have no government involvement in recycling programming, then you have a big return on, on investment, because that basically means that anything that you get out of it, you know, is, is a return on investment, because you've not put much in. However, you have very little control on how that program operates, and this is with waste disposal as well as garbage, I'm sorry, waste disposal as well as recycling. And so we, right above that, we have permits. And Cobb County, right now, kind of sits between permits and no government involvement. So with permits, you have very limited control, however, you have a little bit more that you put into the program, but still, you know, very little control when things occur, like what has happened recently with American Disposal Services. And then above there, you have franchise agreements, where you're putting a little bit more into the, into your program, into your waste disposal, and you have more control when something happens, you're able to go back to your contract and, you know, really kind of rectify any type of situations that occur. And then the fourth, all the way at the top, actually, will be, I guess, number one on this slide, is county collection. So that would be a county that owns and operates its own collection service, so that's the trucks and the transfer station. So you're putting a lot into the equipment and, you know, staffing levels and all of that. However, you also have the most control when anything occurs. So a recycling program that would be good, so this is basically minimum levels, this is the minimum service level. So we're looking at county buildings and facilities, uniformed containers in all county buildings and facilities. Currently, we have some buildings that have recycling bins, whether that's individually at, in each office or at, in each cubicle area, and in a public area, is some buildings that do not. Education for all employees to help them understand, you know, what we're trying to recycle and how to recycle so that we can collect this material. Recycling drop spots, this is a big one. Obviously, we would like to have two locations per district. We get a lot of phone calls about people not having convenient access to the recycling drop spots. And one of the ideas for the good program would be what Commissioner Burrow mentioned earlier, would be to kind of piggyback off of an existing contract, and currently Cobb County School District, their waste disposal contract is with Waste Management. Glass recycling drop spots, I know that this was a big one. I know, Commissioner Burrow, I'm sure that you probably still hear things about this as well, being that you were in the industry for so long when glass was taken out of curbside recycling. A lot of people still want to see glass recycled. We won't be able to do it curbside, but there are other options. There are options, drop spot locations, maybe parks, roll-off containers, where we're gonna be able to collect the glass and take it to...
Do we, do we have the parks' locations now?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't think we did, okay.
No.
If I may say, the drop spots, if they're not manned, you're gonna get contamination and everything besides glass. Well, regardless of that, when they're not manned, I mean, back in the day, companies like Walmart would have drop-off centers for recycling before, you know, single stream came to curbside and things like that, and they were always contaminated. People would leave furniture and mattresses and anything they wanted to get rid of by the, the roll-off containers for glass or recycling. So it's, unless the parks get manned, which, that's gonna be additional personnel and cost, but I'd be hesitant on that.
Okay. One of the things that, that we have recognized and that we've been made aware of is the, the occurrence of pickups. So I know that we have much more contamination once something already looks like it's an illegal dump site, right? So if it's not being picked up often enough and the material's kind of falling over on the side, then people think, oh, I can just throw anything there. We still would have challenges and would still have to communicate and educate the public about what to put in these drop spots, but we have found that when they are serviced regularly and it's easy and convenient to be able to drop your material off there, there are less occurrences of contamination than they are when the drop spots are not being regularly serviced. The glass recycling drop spots could also make us money, if we're able to take our material to, there's a local vendor that's not very far from us that will take, you know, glass, but it needs to be, you know, pretty clean. If you have glass separate, it will be, you know, typically, it's clean. It's just when you put glass in your curbside recycling bin, it causes contamination, you know, the glass contaminates other things, and other things contaminate the glass. We need to look at our ordinance changes, make recycling mandatory, and this is just to require a minimum level of service for our haulers. Currently, we have in our ordinance that it's, we have a suggested offer that haulers in this county are supposed to offer recycling to their residents, but we get phone calls all the time at Keep Cobb Beautiful where people are not offered recycling. And even if they are offered recycling, there's no way for us to control how much a hauler charges their, their customer to recycle, to basically discourage it if they don't want to participate in that, in that program.
When was that taken out of the ordinance?
It's not, it's not taken out. It's still in the ordinance, but all of the haulers are not following that. They're not.
Yeah, 'cause it's always been in the ordinance that they had to offer it at least every other week, if, at least every other week. But the rate wasn't discussed, and they can charge, you know, and that's the prop, that's the issue, they, to add recycling costs more than your monthly pickup rate for garbage. And it is offered, but people don't want to pay that, I guess.
That and not all of the haulers are offering it. I mean, we, we've, it's, it's the, it's the fact. They are supposed to.
Then how are they getting a permit if they don't offer recycling? It's part of the ordinance, they have to comply.
The challenge we have is compliance, staffing, it's, we have an ordinance, but you can only inspect what you inspect. And with the staff right now, and we're not at all saying, who gives a lot of staff? We're just stating facts here. We're gonna work with what we have to make the best of it. But one of the issues we have is keeping up with who's doing what. When you got mergers and acquisitions, new managers coming in, who's, I think you see the list, we changed the hauler's list, and so the compliance, enforcing the law is, was, enforcing the ordinance is what the challenge is, and that's, that's something I really couldn't task him with doing right now, because it would take them totally out of their real primary mission. So yes, it's there, but enforcement is what the real challenge is.
A question on what's there. I mean, does it just say they have to offer recycling, or does it spell out how they have to offer it? I mean, does it say that they have to ask special containers and, and all of that?
It says that they have to offer recycling, and it gives a list excluding glass of what basic materials they have to...
No, I understand that. My question is, is the reason that some of them are not offering it is because, does the law also say how they have to offer it? Because I know, for example, my hauler, all we have to do is, you know, the paper goes in a clear plastic bag, the recycling goes in another type of bag, so they can distinguish them, because when they come up and pick up the trash, it all goes into one truck, but then they can sort it later on. And I'm just wondering, because, you know, when you have to start providing containers and things like that, are we, are we making it overly expensive for these haulers to offer recycling?
It's probably a combination of many things, but the short answer, without going and doing specific research, is that folks can kind of get away when no one is following up and make sure they're doing what they need to do. I've taught, we got people that call us all the time about that their hauler doesn't offer recycling or offers extremely expensive recycling, which is just a way to get around the ordinance. As Commissioner Burrow mentioned, if we didn't set a cap on that, if I don't really want to recycle, I'll just charge you something that's crazy. And so it's, it's probably a combination of things, and that's something we are going to talk about how we can fix.
Additional recycling, hefty energy bag program countywide. And first, I would like to say thank you, Commissioner Ott, because I believe that one of the reasons that we even got the hefty energy bag program, and we were so successful with this particular program, was because the executives that came from all over the country and the world, they were really impressed with the tour and, and the fact that you, you know, were really excited about recycling in this county, and so if you guys are not familiar with that, this is the program where we take plastics that traditionally could not be recycled, and we can collect them curbside, and we're able to use them for energy. This is a really innovative program that I'm really proud of, and so I thank you for that.
Kimberly, is this gonna expand it to all the haulers, or just... Is it still just American?
It is expanding to all of the haulers, and, and custom doesn't want to participate.
Okay, good. Let me know when.
Okay. To expand our medication disposal, currently, we have this, this particular program only twice a year, once in the fall and then once in the spring, and we have it at the one location on Cobb Parkway. And I know that a few other commissioners have expressed that they wanted to expand this program even into their, into their districts. And this is really important, because, you know, we're faced with an opioid epidemic right now in this, in this state, in this country, you know, really, and being able to offer something like this, I think, you know, and get these medications off the streets... But we get phone calls all the time at Keep Cobb Beautiful where people are not offered recycling. And even if they are offered recycling, there's no way for us to control how much a hauler charges their, their customer to recycle, to basically discourage it if they don't want to participate in that, in that program.
When was that taken out of the ordinance?
It's not, it's not taken out. It's still in the ordinance, but all of the haulers are not following that. They're not.
Yeah, because it's always been in the ordinance that they had to offer it at least every other week if, at least every other week. But the rate wasn't discussed and they can charge, you know, and that's the prop, that's the issue. They, to add recycling costs more than your monthly pickup rate for garbage. And it is offered, but people don't want to pay that, I guess.
That and not all of the haulers are offering it. I mean, we, we, it's, it's the rea, it's the fact. They are supposed to...
Then how are they getting a permit if they don't offer recycling? It's part of the ordinance, they have to comply.
The challenge we have is compliance, staffing. We have an ordinance, but you can only inspect what you inspect. And with the staff right now, and we're not at all saying, who gives a lot of staff? We're just stating facts here. We want to work with what we have to make the best of it. But one of the issues we have is keeping up with who's doing what. When you got mergers and acquisitions, new managers coming in, who's, I think you see the list, we changed the hauler's list. And so the compliance, enforcing the law is, was, enforcing the ordinance is what the challenge is. And that's, that's something I really couldn't task them with doing right now because it would take them totally out of their real primary mission. So yes, it's there, but enforcement is what the real challenge is.
A question on what's there. I mean, does it just say they have to offer recycling or does it spell out how they have to offer it? I mean, does it say that they have to ask special containers and, and all of that?
It says that they have to offer recycling and it gives a list excluding glass of what basic materials they have to...
No, I understand that. My question is, is the reason that some of them are not offering it is because, does the law also say how they have to offer it? Because I know, for example, my hauler, all we have to do is, you know, the paper goes in a clear plastic bag, the recycling goes in another type of bag so they can distinguish them. Because when they come up and pick up the trash, it all goes into one truck, but then they can sort it later on. And I'm just wondering, because, you know, when you have to start providing containers and things like that, are we, are we making it overly expensive for these haulers to offer recycling?
It's probably a combination of many things, but the short answer without going and doing specific research is that folks can kind of get away when no one is following up and make sure they're doing what they need to do. I've talked, we got people that call us all the time about that their hauler doesn't offer recycling or offers extremely expensive recycling, which is just a way to get around the ordinance. As Commissioner Burrow mentioned, if we didn't set a cap on that, if I don't really want to recycle, I'll just charge you something that's crazy. And so it's, it's probably a combination of things. And that's something we are going to talk about how we can fix.
Additional recycling, hefty energy bag program countywide. And first, I would like to say thank you, Commissioner Ott, because I believe that one of the reasons that we even got the hefty energy bag program and we were so successful with this particular program was because the executives that came from all over the country and the world, they were really impressed with the tour and, and the fact that you, you know, were really excited about recycling in this county. And so if you guys are not familiar with that, this is the program where we take plastics that traditionally could not be recycled and we can collect them curbside and we're able to use them for energy. This is a really innovative program that I'm really proud of, and so I thank you for that.
Is this going to expand into all the haulers or just... Is it still just America?
It, it is expanding to all of the haulers and, and custom does, doesn't want to participate.
Okay, good. Let me know when.
Okay. To expand our medication disposal, currently we have this, this particular program only twice a year, once in the fall and then once in the spring. And we have it at the one location on Cobb Parkway. And I know that a few other commissioners have expressed that they wanted to expand this program even into their, into their districts. And this is really important because, you know, we're faced with an opioid epidemic right now in this, in, in the state, in this country, you know, really. And being able to offer something like this, I think, you know, and get these medications off the streets, you know, I think is really important. And so we, we want to expand that in our, in our recycling programming.
Well, Star does these drop-offs for medication disposal throughout the year at different locations, and we could partner with them as well.
They do it twice a year, the same time that we do. Everyone does it with the DEA, and they take the material from us. However, in the past, Keep Cobb Beautiful, we were able to partner internally with our Drug Enforcement Administration and, and handle the material and, and take it even on off times when the DEA, then, you know, the federal DEA, they were not doing those, those events. And so we kind of have gotten away from that some because of how we process the material, what we can take. We're no longer allowed to collect the sharps in our, in our program, so that made it a little bit more challenging. So if we could, you know, expand the program into other areas and other timeframes, that would be really helpful, I think.
I know also that CVS and some of the other drugstore chains, because when we created the opioid storyboards with GIS, one of the pages that we have, you can put in your address and it will show you the closest drop-off location. And that's not just during the DEA. So much you might want to do is get, get with the GIS folks because we have a page on one of the GIS storyboards that will, will direct you right to where you can drop the medications off.
Thank you. Also, expanding our community recycling events, right now we do this twice a year. When I first came on board some, a few years back, we were probably taking about 500 to 600 cars at this event in the three or four hour timeframe. Our last event that we had, April 27th, we processed over 2,200 cars in the same timeframe. So we have, you know, more than tripled the amount of cars or people that come to those events. And we are completely maxed out in the timeframe and the location. So if we could expand our actual recycling events, that would be really helpful to give residents more, you know, opportunities throughout the year to be able to drop off material. And then also expand our HHW, which is short for Household Hazardous Waste. We do that only once a year, and those lines are pretty long as well, going into Jim Miller Park. If we could extend that to two times a year, that would be really helpful. In a county our size, we, we really, you know, could offer twice a year and then give people, like I said, more opportunity to drop off material in different locations.
Well, and something about that, and this is more for Steve and those guys, I know that you can bring hazardous waste to the transfer station. The problem is, there is, I think it's a, is it a $5 per gallon or there's five gallons? There's a charge per...
So we can take paint for $5?
Right.
Household hazardous waste.
Okay, but here's the issue with that. I mean, so we have a, we have a location that people can bring paint, which is a lot of the household hazardous waste. But number one, they don't know that they can do it. Number two, they're going to have to pay $10 just to get in the door, and then they're going to have to pay a fee for the paint. So I think that somewhere we need to kind of come up that there's an easy way, because I know right now, if you're going to take paint to the transfer station, you got to wait in line, go on the scales, pay your money, then go around, pull over to the one side where they put it, and then you got to pay the other fee. It, it, that's too difficult. You know, and so here you have a facility where the majority of the stuff that people have in their house is paint, and we have a way to drop it off, but it's, it's cumbersome and inexpensive. Because, you know, you're, if you're paying, I mean, the way around it, you got to get a big five gallon plastic bucket and dump all the paints in to the one bucket and pay one time. So I think that in addition to increasing the HHW residential, there needs to be better coordination with some things we already have in place in the transfer station.
Paint is a very big part of the HHW for sure, but we take a lot of other items.
I know there's other items, but I would say paint's probably a pretty big volume and, and we have the ability to do it every day of the year. The other thing I don't see on here is electronics, because once again, that's something that you can bring to the transfer station, right? You have that one corner, the, the barn or whatever you want to call it, where you can drop off electronics, but unless you, unless you go to, you know, know that you can take it there, because that's a huge amount of waste that we could get rid of. And once again, it's another one of those things, it's not like the standard thing that's going into the, that is standard trash pile that could be hauled away.
Currently, ADS actually partners with us. They bring staff in, in roll-off containers, and they do all of that, you know, free of charge. And they, they take the material from us at the recycling event, so they...
Right, that's, I understand that at the recycling event. What I'm saying is every day of the week, you can take electronics over to the transfer station right now. But you have to pay, once again, it's like the paints, you got to pay, and if it's TV, you got to pay. People don't know that. And, you know, when you only have one or two events a year, somebody can't have all these electronics just piling up at their house, waiting and then hoping that they're here that day when we have a way for them to drop it off. So I think that one of the things that maybe we look at with these fee increases, maybe there's an, you know, another way before you get to the scales or whatever, because that's not affecting the weight that's being hauled off. And then people are paying separately, if they're paying separate for electronics and separate for paint, maybe, because, you know, all that stuff is in those little containers that are across the big shed, right? If there was a way to get over, you know, to pay and go straight to there instead of having to do all the other stuff, I think that you would get more stuff recycled than just thrown into the trash.
A recycling program for, and this is, this will be a better, so really, this is what I call our adequate. You know, before was the minimum level of service. This is, you know, our, our adequate level of service. All items that were listed in option good, of course, our county buildings and facilities have uniformed containers in our, in our facilities, and also in our parks locations as well have recycling containers. We do not currently have recycling containers in our parks locations. Recycling drop spots, the other, the other offer in good was to add it to a current program, a current, you know, contract, basically. This would offer, would have us servicing our recycling drop spots. And the reason why this is important is because you have situations that occur, and when you have other, you know, entities or hauling services that service those containers, if there are issues with that, regardless of staffing levels or issues with truck, with the trucks or whatever the case may be, you know, it really diminishes our ability to be able to service the containers and give our residents what, you know, they want and what they really need and deserve. So if we have our own front loader trucks that can service the containers and have three locations per district, so it's even more accessible, especially for our residents that live in District Two that have the ability to go over the border and just drop off the material that we have in this county, but over in Broadswell or in Sandy Springs and take it to their recycling centers over there. We want to be able to keep the material going to the recycling MRF here in our county.
So if you have these county vehicles, you know, we have the single stream recycling that does not include glass. Where's the glass going? And who's taking it there?
So we don't have any glass recycling in the county that we manage at all.
No, I know that. I mean, so like, for example, the glass containers that are over behind the blue building on County Services Road, where is that glass going?
So the, the glass, the glass containers are at, are at West Rock, and they're, that's considered like the convenient, the customer convenience center. So people drive it over there, they drop it off, and then that material is hauled to strategic material, which is in, I believe, College Park. And so then they process the material there. All glass in the metro Atlanta communities goes to strategic material.
Right, okay. So my question then goes back to on your recycling drop spots. I understand any of this stuff that falls into the single stream recycling and just go over to the facility on County Services Road. But if you have glass recycling, are the county vehicles going to be taking this down to the place you just talked about? Or how's it going to get to there?
Yes. Yes. So we would have recycling drop spots, glass recycling drop spots in these different locations throughout the districts. And then we would have two 20-yard roll-off containers or 20-yard roll-off containers and trucks, two trucks to be able to take that material down. And that's what I meant in the last slide where I said that glass could actually make the county money. It needs to be clean and it needs to be dropped off. Yes.
Okay.
So, so I want to just, you know, go over something really quickly because some of these items are the same items that were on the other slide as well. The difference is in yellow, so as you can see, the ordinance changes, still mandatory recycling, an exclusive franchise could actually fund this type of recycling program, and a non-exclusive franchising could fund the program, I mean, the good recycling program that I discussed earlier. And the only difference in additional recycling on this slide is two HH, two industrial HHWs. And this is something where it would not be free to, to the industrial vendors, they would pay, but this would be an opportunity for us to stop illegal dump, dumping really that's causing DOT to have to go out and clean up areas when you have places that, or, you know, whether they're contractors or people that go out and dump material in wooded areas that we, you know, don't see or unaware of for a while.
A quick question on the exclusive franchising. Are you talking about just for recycling or is this going back to the discussion we had on franchising for trash hauling?
This is going back to the discussion we had on franchising for waste haulers. However, I'm going to let Director Tanks talk a little bit more about that later. But I, I do want to, I do want to say that the reason why this is really important is because, so Keep America Beautiful basically trains like me and all the other, you know, affiliate directors spread out all over the country, and we operate off of what we call the 80% rule. So that means 20% of the population, if you put a recycling container 500 miles away, that person's going to drive 500 miles and drop off one piece of plastic because they're just so excited about it and so into it. Then you have the other 20% of the population, then no matter how convenient you make it, you can make it so easy for them, they're still not going to do it, no matter what. Then you have 60% of the population, these are the people in the middle. So they're willing to do this if it's convenient or if it's easy for them or if they understand. That's really the part of the population that you're really speaking to. And if you get the 60% on and you already have your 20%, in any statistical analysis, 80% is a pretty good number to have. So you'll have 80% of the population recycling or doing the right thing, caring about the environment. That's really the number that we go after. So this is the best. This is recycling programs, this is to expect the best here, right? It's our vision. So we will have all items that are in options good and better, still with the uniformed containers in the, in the buildings and facilities and the parks locations, and recycling in garbage containers in high-traffic pedestrian zones. So in areas where you have people walking back and forth to either commercial districts or there are areas, you know, in the county that people, you have a lot of foot traffic, we, you know, we would be looking to place recycling in garbage containers there. Then you have your recycling drop spots. So you still have your two front loader trucks and then one rear loader truck that would service all the drop spots throughout the county. This would be including any parks locations, government centers per district. So you would have our, our government centers that we had our recycling drop spots at in all the districts that before they were removed, we would have recycling at these locations that would be serviced and of course at the parks. And then a county recycling collection center, basically a charm center for Cobb County, and that stands for Center for Hard to Recycle Material. So this is, these are, you know, items that instead of having, you know, more and more and more recycling events to address all of the residents that want to participate in recycling, we would have a centralized location where people could drop off material too, the same as they have in Athens and, and also in Atlanta if they have it. Our glass recycling drop-offs would be the county recycling collection center, that's the only difference. We would be able to take glass at, at a charm center. Ordinance changes would be the same, and then additional recycling would be the same if we had the ability to have like a charm center here so that we could address, you know, collecting material. So our recycling ordinance updates. Currently, we have a suggested offer of recycling for our residents. We don't have much control over our county waste haulers. We have very limited enforcement and an outdated definition of recyclable material. That's not necessarily a negative thing. I mean, it's just like, it's just like, you know, cell phones. So every year, Apple comes up with brand-new technology and a new cellphone. We just have to have the ability to update material that can be accepted based off of fluctuating market values. Some material is kept in and some material is taken out. So just having that ability to do that. Recommended mandatory recycling enforcement for county waste haulers, update definition of recyclable material procedures, and require all haulers to charge one combined base fee, which includes recycling and the total price. So here we are, this is, you know, this is pretty much my last slide, so here are the facts, right? So recycling costs money and recycling sometimes makes money. Recycling usually costs more than it makes. But the question to really ask ourselves is, does recycling cost more or less than the alternative? The alternative is to what? Do nothing. But we know from all of our residents that, you know, reach out to us, and, and we have lots of emails that come in through the email account that was set up in reference to, you know, the waste hauler issues and complaints. And a lot of these emails have come through even for recycling. Some of them, you know, have read, you know, "We live on Paper Mill, wondering why we don't have reliable recycling pickup any longer." "Why can't we have public service for trash? Compliant management, standardized service, integrated recycling, lower damage to our, to our streets, lower emissions from multiple trucks. This is ridiculous to have free market for utility. Have the private vendors as subs to the county." These are the type of emails that we're getting from residents on a daily basis because they want to see something done, they want more recycling, they, they, they want to see us, you know, have a better environmental program here in the county. What are the typical costs, you know, for recycling, land, buildings, vehicles, maintenance, educational material? You know, what impacts this? The frequency of collection, number of households, drop-off centers, how many do we have? Are they staffed or are they unstaffed? How do we reduce this cost? If we maximize our participation, cost per ton decreases as tonnage increases. We minimize contamination, use existing resources, our KAB affiliates, you know, myself and, and resources that we have, educational material, state contracts, grants and funding. And how do we fund this? So at the bottom, we have some probably unpopular, but they're still options, so we should, you know, we should probably discuss them. So property tax are sploshed. However, we also have innovative ways to be able to fund recycling programs, grants like state grants and recycling partnerships. They have grants, curbside value partnerships, they have grants as well, rev, revenue from recyclables, host fees and franchise fees. Okay, so I'm going to let Director Tanks come up unless anybody has any questions.
And this is probably for both of you. I mean, great briefing, a lot of information. My concern is that we have some small mom-and-pop haulers that do a tremendous job. For example, like, you know, we pay $26 a month, they come twice a week, they do recycling, they come up my driveway, I don't, all I have to do is literally put the trash can outside the garage door. I don't want to have to lose that kind of service because you go to a lot of these other companies and it's once a week, and they might do recycling, they might not. You know, the level of service is not uniform. And my concern about going to franchise fees and everything else is the folks that have a good company or have a good provider are going to get screwed because they're going to have to all of a sudden now accept what the industry standard is. And I, I just, I have a problem with that.
My, my closing points would probably address...
Hold on, Bill. Bill, where's your brush?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to piggyback on that. There, there's other options besides exclusive franchise fee that other cities and municipalities do, and the county manager has done some research and has some other contracts from other cities where the hauler pays a certain percentage of their revenue that they generate in, in the county to offset some of these fees and, and service. My concern with going to drop-off locations is number one, the contamination if they're not manned. But also, years ago, curbside recycling, putting the responsibility on the haulers to offer the recycling and, you know, take it to a recycling center where it's sorted and separated and, and marketed, was the way to go to replace... and separated and, and marketed, was the way to go to replace the drop-off centers. And now it looks like we're going back to, to an outdated or antiquated more expense for us to haul to the glass recycling or the, the MRF. But... I, I don't know. Go ahead with your, what you want.
Actually, my closing comments is probably going to address the concerns y'all had. What I asked Kimberly to do was to give me her best bet, I want her to dream. The, the reality is, anything we do has to come and be vetted through this board, through management. I didn't want to restrict her to what I thought we would or would not agree to, but frankly, the conversation today, the objective was just to start the conversation. And we're going to follow up with these work sessions, come see each one of you on an individual basis. I already saw great ideals coming from the commissioners, so that's a process. I understand, nothing happens at one meeting, not even one agenda, but we know that it is time now to make the board aware of what our current environment is. And we also know there's a great amount of information, Commissioner, stuff, ideas, we were thinking, a lot of things that we could all put our heads together and do what's best for the county. So the clear objective for this work session was just simply that, awareness. We wanted to make you aware of the current state of our waste management here in Cobb. It is not a crisis. We don't have a crisis, I will say. But there is a rising tide of public concern. We, I am surprised how many, not surprised, I'm actually encouraged on how many people in Cobb County are serious about recycling and serious about the beautification of Cobb. We get calls, you all, I get emails from every one of your all constituents about somebody throwing a mattress in their neighborhood or this type of thing, and they want us to do something. But today, we just wanted to start a dialogue. This is why this is a work session. And mainly, the end goal for me is to get clarity on the board's direction and of course to get this dialogue going. So the very points you are making, we want feedback now. I, again, I wanted Kimberly to shoot for the stars, and if Kimberly had her way, the whole world would recycle and it would be against the law to litter, and you would go to jail for 20 years, I can assure you. There's, there's no surprise why we have the most awards of any other municipality because of her passion. I was at a board meeting when we started the day, and out of nowhere, the president hollers, "Oh, and we just started a new adopt-a-mile." She has leveraged so many volunteers in this county to work for that office. How many adopt-a-mile groups you got? 108 volunteer groups. So when Kimberly speaks, don't be surprised if she wants us to just take over the world and recycle. But I also explained to her that we do have to come and work this through the board of commissioners and our, and our, and our citizens. We do have some citizens just as passionate as she are. I believe a few of them may be here watching today. A broad definition of waste management, I won't waste your all time, you heard a lot, but mainly environmental sustainability. That's what we want. Cobb is growing. We don't want this place to become a junk hole. And recycling. We want to empower our county to recycle, reuse and reduce use of things that can be, that have caused us waste, and also beautification. I don't want to overlook that point. Waste management, it was just one part, was recycling, but it's a big picture. We have landfills that have to be managed. We got these trash issues that Commissioner, you asked me to talk about. So far, actions to date, what have we done? First thing I did when I came into this position was to move solid waste from under parks and put them directly under me. I recognized based on some conversations with the county manager and the former Public Services Agency Director, Deputy County Manager, that this was going to be a growing concern and issue and that it needed some immediate attention. It was one of the first things the county manager asked me to look at. Then we moved the solid waste office, believe it or not. They were in East Mabelton. Now, how could they keep up with that transfer station on that park out there in Nickajack Park? I had no idea, but that's where they were. We now have them on County Services Parkway. Also with Dr. Jenkins, who was absent for personal reasons today, he's the divisional or manager. He's, we work with ADS, as you know, with Steve, to address some of the county issues. We had the transfer stations. We were getting two-hour waits. I think we've had a few blips of maybe a one-hour right after holiday. The worst complaint I got the other day was one of y'all's constituents had a 15-minute wait. I almost wanted to say, but we took that complaint serious. 15 minutes is still 15 minutes. But we've solved some of these problems by working with these property providers. And another thing we've done is set goals with Dr. Jenkins and Director White. Our mid-range goals, continually assess what's going on with waste management. Our county's growing, I don't have to tell you all that, you know it. The volatile business environment is a concern. The mergers and acquisitions, as you may have heard, it's been alluded to, American disposal has probably purchased 50% of the market in Cobb. And guess what? From what I heard today, who was that? Waste Connections just bought them out. So how do we, we can't control these mergers. As soon as we get one management place, there's another one coming in and there you go with the service issue. So then there's China. I don't have to spell that out. China is in a war with the US economically, and guess what? They don't take any more recycling from this country and it's backlogging. This is a nationwide issue. It's not just something happening in Cobb. That's why I say it's not a crisis, but it's just not going away. As people come in, waste increase. And then public sentiment. Again, I was encouraged. We have probably 400 logged complaints and concerns about recycling and trash that we have in the email. Working with Ross and his team, we've set up an email for complaints because as you mentioned earlier, Commissioner, we cannot control private agency, it's just a permitting agency. We can influence them and we've done a good job of influencing them, but they pretty much run their own shops. We have, we want to inform and engage the county manager and the board of commissioners on the changes that are occurring in the industry, the challenges we have, but also we want to give you options for solutions. Our long, our long-term goal, just to make this quick, if I said it in one word, is stability. That's what we want to see, stability. Cobb has to get ready. I don't want us to wait four years when it does become somewhat of a crisis before we start thinking and vetting and discussing this. That's why we're starting this early. I don't expect anything to happen immediately, but we do want to come talk to you all and come up with solutions. I know Commissioner Gamble has a pamphlet that she's already got solutions for some of the things we do, and we're going to come to you all for your ideals. A stable and sustainable waste management environment for Cobb County, that's our end goal. I understand that some level of government involvement kind of causes to rub some people wrong, but in a free market, it works great for financial growth. It's not necessarily the best thing for service because right now, we have a pseudo-monopoly. Be careful how I say that. I'm not the federal government, but 50% of the Cobb market has allowed some people to do some things, and I'm not mentioning anyone in particular. And it doesn't always meet the service needs of our citizens. So the balance that we can strike is that at least to get involved on be the voice of our citizens and consumers and at least project their voices some of these private companies. Currently, our goal is to work on this, just communicate and come to you all this work session, start discussing it, and then I'm going to close with some noteworthy points. You all should know, as I told you, I would bring in a recent acquisition of a large portion of Cobb County market by one hauler, for many haulers has created quite a stir. It's in the newspaper, and it stirred up the public sentiment. They have not come to BOC meetings yet, but they are loading us up on emails and their phone calls, we're not even catching all of them. We've had hundreds, and I'm not exaggerating, hundreds of complaints logged and many more that are not logged. Some people called and said, "Well, we wonder if y'all going to do anything anyway," and they hang up. Communications Department, they've established, I mentioned the email, that's helped us to keep up with some of these complaints. And we are fielding calls that should be handled by these haulers' customer service divisions. We're handling those calls at our communications department and also in our solid waste. It is taking a great deal of the time. Dr. Jenkins and his staff and Ross Cavan, we've done a pretty good job of relaying these complaints on behalf of the citizens to these private haulers, and in the most part, they're responding. Problem is, this is not sustainable. I think they're just putting out fires. We get a complaint from Mrs. Johnson or Mr. Johnson, they'll go and eliminate that because we put the pressure on them, and that's just one. Next week, there's another one pops up. So it's not sustainable and it doesn't fit into our long-term goals. We can't control the mergers and acquisitions at the local level. This pattern services issues may continue to fluctuate with the market. As you just said, I told you, Waste Connect just bought American, and I believe Waste Management is doing their due diligence to buy Advance. So this is not going away. In 1999, we had 60 haulers. That let us have more competitive rates, better service. 2019, we have 20 haulers. Escalating rates, service issues, rising tide of public dissatisfaction, and one hauler with the lion's share of the market. Funding, that's always a question. We're looking at options that would appeal to the board. We're not just talking about one-stop shop here. We want to hear what you have to say, we want to hear your ideals. Not everything is going to cost money. Sometimes it's just resources and looking at different options. Also, my closing comment here before I entertain questions about all we presented today. In my professional opinion, as the AD for Public Services, our current system is not adequate to provide stability and sustainability of a progressive and growing county. So we do need to do something. I don't need you to have to do something tomorrow, I got to be careful how I say this, nor immediately, but let's talk about this as a board of managers and see what we can do to give Cobb a better future recycling and waste management. So at this point, I'll close and entertain questions for me, Kimberly, or anyone else.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Admiral.
Thank you, Bill and Kimberly, for that presentation. As Bill alluded, when I was down in Savannah, I did learn about this Gumsters. It's a recycling, where actually residents will pay to put in their recycling, and then it'll package it and put it in a container, and then they'll pick it up. The good news is, is it's no cost to the county. We can enter, they will deliver the machine and then work out a fee.
Right. Revenue sharing.
Revenue sharing, thank you, Bill, for us. So this is something that I would definitely like to consider with Kimberly's input as far as where we could locate this to start this in my district.
Okay, great. Where's your bro? Can we show up? Couple things. My concerns, as you've heard, are about the small haulers. You know, when you say we had all those haulers, well, what's happened is the ones that we've lost are the small ones. And, and the fact of the matter is, the small ones do better service, at least historically it seems like the smaller ones provide a more robust service than, than the big companies. And so, no, we can't keep somebody from buying somebody, but if we're issuing a permit, we can, we can put rules in place.
Yes, sir.
That, you know, you may want to buy these guys, but you're not going to be able to haul in this county. And, and so I think that's how we crack down on it. I mean, you know, there's plenty of times you read in the newspaper about, you know, this phone company wants to buy that phone company and, and either judicial side or different parts of the federal government say no because it's going to be anti-competitive. Well, what's happened is, under our noses, because we don't have anything in place, we now have somebody who has half the hauling in the county, and they're doing a crummy job. And so I think that one of the changes that has to happen is a more robust permitting of who we allow to be in the county and what the requirements are to be able to haul in the county. Because guess what? If they can't haul in the county, then you know they're making a lot of money, otherwise it wouldn't have bought all those accounts. That's the first thing. Second thing, I think one of the ways you can get to the community collection, whatever Kimberly called them, what I've seen in other states, like for example, Maryland and South Carolina, is they're not open 24 hours a day. What happens is they're open certain times during the day, and that's when they're manned. And they have the separate containers for cardboard and for trash and for all the different recycling things, and it's manned, it's fenced, you can't get in there when it's not open, but that's how you make it work. And in order to use that, you have to have a sticker on your car. So there could be a fee to be able to go use that. That's how you can make sure that it's only county residents using it. You can work it out with Advance that they can be the ones to come and get those big, whatever you call them, the bigs. Yeah, the roll-offs. Because that's all they are, is roll-offs with, some of them have compactors and stuff like that. That would make it more convenient, and I think it would be more manageable because you wouldn't have to be trying to man it 24 hours a day. I mean, and it's done in lots of other places. I just think that we have to be real careful to take away good service from the folks that have good service provided and give them less than good service in trying to make up for, you know, particular haulers' inefficiencies or, or just plain bad service. I think that, you know, when people see, expect the best, what we can do is, we don't necessarily have to provide it, but we can make sure that anybody that we allow to provide service in this county does provide the best. And if they're not doing it, then we kick them out.
Okay, Bill, thank you.
All right, thank you for your time. We will be scheduling meetings with each one of you.
I've got one more question, and I think this is for Steve. You remember, we had the issue with, and I just remembered this. I had a resident in District Two who has a house here in the county, pays his property taxes here in the county, but spends most of his time in Florida, therefore has a Florida driver's license. And remember, we had the issue, and maybe you don't know, we had an issue when he went to drop off at the transfer station, they wanted to charge him the out-of-county rate, even though the person legally had property in the county and even brought the utility bill or something like that. What have we done about that?
We, they've since fixed that. At the last Waste Authority Board, we brought up that issue that they're, I think you all accepting now tax bills and you're accepting business license that are current. If they can prove that they are paying taxes here in Cobb, then we will treat them as a Cobb resident.
We recently received an email of things that American was doing to try to resolve the issues that they were having, bringing in more trucks from other areas or something.
Yes, ma'am.
Has that been cleared up? Because I haven't seen the number of emails we were getting. I haven't seen.
We still have.
You still have them.
Yes, ma'am. As I mentioned earlier, they are able to put out spot fires, and I think they're just responding to complaints, but there's probably a lot more that are not complaining and they're coming in waves. We got a complaint as, as recent as one hour ago from your, your District Commissioner, that about people who said they couldn't enjoy the holidays because of the stench of trash. So I don't think they have a long-term solution, they're just trying to make time personally. That's my opinion. But they did say they were trying to bring in out-of-state drivers and out-of-state trucks to address their understaffed market.
Or maybe we ask for a plan ongoing.
Well, one of the problems, they don't have a single point of contact, do they?
John Elliott.
We, we have established a point of contact with them.
Because one of the biggest problems in District Two is Indian Hills, because Indian Hills, I think, is exclusively American. And that's 1,700 homes, and they're just, they're not providing the service. I'm not even sure they're providing it once a week. So whoever it is that you're talking to, we need to get on their case because they've got to deal with the trash in Indian Hills.